So I have to read some statements here pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GL Chapter 30A Section 18 and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Harwich Board of Appeals on Wednesday, April 29, 2020 at 1:07 PM is being conducted via remote participation. No person, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. If anyone wants to listen in or view this meeting in progress, they can do so in accordance with the remote access instructions which are contained in the meeting agenda which is posted on the Board of Appeals webpage on the Town of Harwich website. You can watch it on Channel 18, or you can join this meeting right now from your computer, tablet, or smartphone by typing in HTTPS colon slash slash global dot go to meeting dot com slash join slash seven eight nine two three one four six one. All those slashes are forward slashes, I guess you call them. You can also dial in using your phone, two two four five zero one three four one two. The access code is seven eight nine dash two three one dash four six one. And if you're not participating, you are asked if there's going to be any background noise to please mute your telephones. And then when you are going to speak, turn off the mute and then address the meeting if you would please. And they also say that when you're going to speak, you have to state your name, address, the reason for your participation in the meeting, whether you're the attorney or a builder, a neighbor, whatever, state your address if you're a neighbor. You need to do this both at the beginning of your statement and again at the end of the statement. We'll have the board members identify themselves. I'm Dave Ryer. Sorry, I couldn't get my last name up there in that little block. Mr. Armstrong?
I'm James Armstrong.
Al?
I'm Kathleen Muller.
Okay. Al?
Alex Donahue.
Will Lee.
Chris Murphy.
Ryan?
Bryce Alden.
Okay, and Jim Hilliard?
Jim Hilliard.
Okay. All right.
Am I the only one who can't see Jim?
Shayla?
It was delayed.
Okay, Jim, you want to call the first case, please?
Sure. The first case is case number, am I clear? Can you hear me okay? Am I, can you hear me in there?
Yes.
Okay. Case 202014, Jean Murray and Jane Marie Murray through their agent attorney, William Riley, have applied for a special permit to add second floor habitable space to their pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-54, as set forth on Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. Property is located at 23 Harborview Road, Map 6, Parcel E S-19, in the R H 1 zoning district.
Okay, Attorney Riley, on this case we'll have voting. Ms. Muller, Mr. Hilliard, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong, and Mr. Murphy. Mr. Capoli, Mr. Sullivan, and me will not be voting on this case, so you're five voting members. And if you could go ahead and present your case, please, Mr. Riley.
Well, thank you very much, Bill Riley, Chatham. On behalf of Jean and Jane Marie Murray, who are permanent residents at 23 Harborview Road, they purchased the property as a place to retire and they're living there full-time. And they felt that they just needed more room. If you've been to the site, as I'm sure you all have been, it's a small, one-story building, 862 square feet. And they wanted to add a second floor, so they would have a master bedroom and an office up on the second floor, and then a master bedroom and kitchen and living area on the first floor, and then a craft room down in the cellar. So the lot is non-conforming, it's only got 2,700 square feet. The house doesn't meet any of the setbacks because of the size of the lot. So it's a completely non-conforming situation, because I'm sure most of the lots on that street are. The, under Section 325-54A2, requires a finding by the board that the alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Do the members have the site plan and the building plans that were submitted?
Yes.
Okay, great. So you can see that the design is a traditional New England design, and really just gives them enough room to be comfortable, as they say, for, you know, for permanent residents in retirement. The, as you know, the campground where they're located, it's an old cottage neighborhood where, you know, many of the houses have been enlarged. In fact, at this point, there are only three one-story cottages remaining on the street. All the rest have been added to primarily in height, because again, the lots are so small down there. In fact, the neighbor across the street is a two-and-a-half story house. The, so I believe that given the design, which I think is an attractive design, I hope you do too, we think that the Murray's home would be compatible, both in size and in style, with the other homes on the street. The, and, you know, I don't know what else to say. It's a, it's a design that fits in well and we believe will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And that would be our, that would be our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Riley. Questions from the board? Ms. Muller?
Questions?
All right, there's a lot of static came on, Cats, you'll have to repeat that.
I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard?
I have no questions.
Donahue?
My only question would be the height of the building when it's completed.
The, on the, on the building permits we sent along, the, the height of the building from top of foundation is going to be 27, 27 feet, one inch from the top of foundation.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Chris Murphy has no questions.
Okay, Mr. Capoli?
No questions.
Mr. Sullivan?
No questions, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, I certainly think the application meets the requirements of the bylaw in the Gale case. I don't see that this particular project would be any more, well, it would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity. I do think, though, we would need that construction condition, that we have no substantial demolition, external construction, or new landscaping in any year during the period from 30 June through Labor Day. Is there anyone, anyone in the public that's on this meeting call that would like to comment either favorably or unfavorably on this particular petition? Okay, hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Who moved? You got it, who moved? Who moved?
Jim Hilliard.
Second.
Mr. Hilliard, we have a second?
Second, Al Donahue.
Okay, second to Mr. Donahue. Discussion by the board? Board generally agree that the bylaw and the Gale case are met with this application?
Yes.
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 I will entertain a motion in this case.
Jim Hilliard, I move that the application submitted on behalf of Jean Murray and Jane Marie Murray for special permit to add a second floor habitable space to their pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling be approved. The application pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, 325, Section 325-54, is set forth in Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. Property located, 23 Harborview Road, Map 6, Parcel E 5-19. The condition that the board would place on it is that between the period June 30th and Labor Day, there would be no major construction on the exterior of the house.
And no major demolition or landscaping?
No major demolition, well.
Okay, could I have a second on the motion, please? You could identify yourself.
Kathleen Muller, second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion by the board on the motion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to do a voice vote because it's too hard otherwise for Shayla. Ms. Muller?
Uh, yes.
Yes? Okay, Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved and the special permit is granted. Ms. Delaney, I authorize you to stamp all these submitted documents, if you would, please.
On behalf of the Murrays, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Riley.
Thank you.
You stay on or check out, whatever your pleasure is.
I'm going to check out. Thank you very much. Appreciate all you're doing today.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Need to call the second case, if you would, please, Mr. Hilliard.
Sure. Case number 2020-15, Sarah A. Toronto Flores, trustee of the Deacons, Deacons Fawley Realty Trust, through her agent David Little of Ryder &amp; Wilcox, has applied for a special permit to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2. Area regulations is set forth in Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 21 Deacons Fawley Road, Map 46, Parcel X 6, in the RL zoning district.
Attorney Singer, this is your case, is it not?
No, that would be, that would be David Little, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm on, I'm on phone only with my initials D L on the screen.
Yep, we got you.
Um, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, wait a minute, Mr. Little, we're going to have voting, just so you know, who's going to vote on the case. We'll have Ms. Muller, Mr. Hilliard, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong, and Mr. Capoli.
Thank you very much. David Little from Ryder &amp; Wilcox. As mentioned in, in the ad, the Realty Trust is proposing to raise an existing six-bedroom duplex on the site and replace it with a six-bedroom single-family dwelling. The original dwelling was constructed in 1971. I have appeared before the Conservation Commission, and they issued an order of conditions for the project on February 21st. And also, our office appeared before the Board of Health, which has issued a variance for the leaching facility on the site on March 17th. So the situation is that we are actually proposing to construct the new foundation in the exact same footprint as the existing foundation, but because of structural issues with the foundation, it's requiring a new one. The, all setbacks, side yard setbacks remain the same, the dwelling conforms to the required front yard setbacks. And the increase in building coverage is only due to the fact that we are proposing porches over the decks on the rear of the house, and we are proposing a porch on the front of the house. So other than that, the, the dwelling itself does not result in any new nonconformities. The building coverage does increase slightly, but still conforms. The site coverage with the, include, including the new porches, it will conform with the zoning bylaw, and the height of the new building will be 29.35 feet. We've, we've provided you with a site plan and building elevation plans and drawings. We believe that the project will not adversely affect the neighborhood, and in fact, we're hoping that you would find that replacing a duplex with a single-family dwelling will actually result in, in a decrease in the intensity of the use on the property. There would probably be a reduction in traffic flow and safety, being a single-family dwelling now. And during the Conservation Commission hearing, we included downspouts and dry wells to infiltrate all stormwater runoff appropriately, so we would not impact sand pond. We've also included notes that all debris from demolition of the existing dwelling will be placed in trucks and immediately removed from the site, and a dumpster would remain on site during construction of the new dwelling. We, so we're hopeful that, that you find that this, this application will be in harmony with the intent of the chapter, and you could find your way to issue a special permit for the project. So that would, that would be my presentation. If I can answer any questions, please, please ask away. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Muller?
I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Hilliard?
I have no questions.
Mr. Donahue?
I have no questions, other than it would enhance the neighborhood. It's going to be a lovely location.
Mr. Armstrong?
No questions.
Mr. Murphy?
No questions.
Mr. Capoli?
No questions.
Sullivan?
No questions. I agree that it would enhance the neighborhood.
I only have one question, Mr. Lytle. Looking at the rear elevation, is the, is the basement below grade?
No, it's a, it's a walkout basement, sir. It, as, currently, there is a walkout basement in the rear of the dwelling, and we, the only difference is, we, we plan to put a few more doors and windows in than presently exists.
Okay. But on the front, okay, yeah, and the front basement will be below grade, and just because of the land drops off, it's below, it's above grade on the rear, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think it meets the requirements of the bylaw in the Gale case, and would certainly not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this application, either in favor or against it? Okay, hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Jim Hilliard?
Second, Kathleen Muller.
I'll entertain a motion in the case. Public hearing is closed. Oh, wait, we got to vote on the, the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion in the case itself, please.
Jim Hilliard, I move that the board approve the special permit requested by the trustees of the Deacons, Deacons Fawley Trust, Sarah Toronto Flores, through her agent David Little, for a special permit to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family house. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2. Area regulations is set forth in Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. Property located at 21 Deacons Fawley Road. I don't know whether we want a, a restriction on the demolition and building of this. I would leave that to you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I don't think so. This particular location is off the main road, and it's, and not going to be a high-traffic area. I think there's plenty of room down there for them to do what they do. Now, I'm not going to pull on the case, and I don't know how the other members feel about that.
To finish my, to finish my motion, and the Board of, Board of Appeal finds no substantial detriment to the area with the awarding of the special permit.
Oh, we haven't voted on it yet, but...
That's my motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Well, we need a second.
Second, Mr. Capoli.
Okay, second to Mr. Capoli. Any discussion by the board members?
With regard to the restrictions for building purposes, that's a dead-end street, and the prop, the street itself is relatively wide. I think the property will be able to, it'll probably be able to contain whatever trucks, vehicles that are necessary for the construction, or demolition.
I, I don't think they need it, but I think there's plenty of room down there. Okay, voting on the motion itself, Ms. Muller?
Aye, I'm in favor.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Okay, special permit granted, motions approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just another verbal approval from you to stamp documents?
Yes, I authorize you to stamp all the documents that were submitted since this motion was approved, please, thank you. Okay, Mr. Hilliard, we'll do our last case, if you would, please.
Case number 2020-16, David Scott Sloan, trustee of 17 Bayview Road Nominee Trust, through his agent attorney, Andrew Singer, has applied for special permits to remove three pre-existing non-conforming detached accessory structures and replace them with three conforming accessory structures. One accessory structure with two bedrooms, and one garage with one bedroom and one pool house. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-9, Table 1, Section 325-54, is set forth in Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 17 Bayview Road, Map 7, Parcel J 6-2, in the RL zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Singer, this is your, your case?
Who's voting?
Ah, who's voting? Yes, okay. Thank you. We will have Ms. Muller, Mr. Hilliard, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Armstrong, and Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate your meeting with us this afternoon and by these unusual methods. This is, as you noted, a property, 17 Bayview Road. It is a large lot for the area, 66,000 square feet. It has frontage on both Snow and Road and Bayview Road, but the access traditionally and as today is only from Bayview Road, the vehicular access. What is being proposed, the, the main house is being replaced, but that's a conforming change. There are, if you've been by, three more dilapidated accessory buildings. They're all pre-existing non-conforming to existing setbacks. The applicants are proposing to replace all of them with conforming structures. In and of itself, that does not require zoning relief from you. What requires the relief is that in two of the structures, they would like to maintain bedrooms, as I'll discuss, and that is a, an allowed special permit use in the zoning district. The only nonconformity that would remain on the property is, if you're looking at the plans on the, sort of the center-left bottom of the site, you'll see a fence that says "proposed pool and equipment." That is a concrete pad for pool equipment and other HVAC equipment. That would remain within the setback. It is tucked into a corner. What is next to it, or boys behind it, is a tennis court on the other property. That, though, it'll be less nonconforming, but it's, it's going to remain nonconforming. So we've asked you for special permit relief to alter the pre-existing nonconforming conditions, to remove the three structures that violate setbacks, and to replace just that equipment pad that I mentioned. And we've also asked, as part of the special permit, for your review as necessary for the bedrooms. In the building that'll be closest to Bayview Road, that will be a guest house, which will have two bedrooms in it, as shown on the plans. The building on the north part of the property is a garage, which will have a one-bedroom living area above it. Not a detached second guest house, per se, but an accessory building with bedrooms. And those, we submit, so you're looking at is the standard of, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and also the special permit criteria of Section 325-51. We'd submit respectively that the proposal meets all of those requirements and will not be a detriment, because the use of the property will not change, it's going to remain a single-family residential as part of the redevelopment. The, all of the three pre-existing nonconforming structures, as I mentioned, will be eliminated, and all three structures, one of them's a pool house that's in the middle of the property, all three of those structures will be conforming. The equipment shed, which will still be nonconforming, will be less nonconforming than the existing encroachments on both of those property lines. If you look at the existing conditions plan... If you look at the existing conditions plan for where the two structures on the southerly lot line encroach, you will see that the equipment shed will be further away. Building coverage on the property is going to remain conforming. Site coverage on the property is going to remain conforming. Building height of the structures will be conforming. And we have on the site plan from Coastal Engineering, and I apologize, I should have identified that Sean Riley from Coastal Engineering is on the line as well. There is a table that Sean included with the building heights on the plan. Drive-way access is going to remain from Bayview Road. There'll be a pedestrian path out to Snowin Road, but all vehicular access will continue as it has for generations to be from Bayview Road. There's going to be no negative impact to water supply, or wetlands, or drainage, nor to traffic. We submit that the site is appropriate, there'll be no undue nuisance hazard or congestion, nor will there be any adverse effects to the public health or the welfare. And one thing we would ask, because this is such a large lot, and because the applicant would like to begin at least the demolition work before Labor Day, and if you've been by the property, you, you've seen that all of the structures are in a fair state of dilapidation. Because the site is so big, and trucks very easily can be parked off the street, we'd ask if, in lieu of your standard condition on exterior construction, if you would impose a condition instead that all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and off of Bayview Road, and naturally Snowin Road, whenever there's construction, not just during the summer. And so we'd ask if you would consider that as part of your ultimate motion as well. With that, if you have questions for either Sean or I, we'd be happy to address them, and we thank you very much for your time.
Why did the building commissioner turn down the application? I don't have that in my package, the denial letter.
I had spoken with it, this, this all happened after town hall was closed. I had submitted an email letter request to Mr. Chesley, I copied Shayla on it, and I know I had a response from Ray saying that he received it and was processing it, but I turned to Shayla, I don't have a copy of it with me.
He did, in fact, speak on that, and I'm not sure he actually put one together. I know that we spoke, and it was about the fact that you have a need for a special permit whenever you have accessory buildings with bedrooms.
Correct, I discussed it.
Okay, the reason I ask is, I'm just looking at 325-54, and it seems to me under seven, I guess it would be A7, operation or extension of other structures, this isn't other ste, or other structures, they're not single-family or two-family residences, that you would meet the criteria to do these as of right, because they're now all going to be conforming, and that the non-conforming is an encroachment of some of the lot lines. So it seems to me you would fit under that, where you'd be able to proceed as of right.
I wish you, I wish I agreed with you completely, Mr. Chairman, because it would make the project go a lot quicker. The one area where I respectfully disagree is that if these were just going to be accessory structures without bedrooms, I believe you're correct, but because they are accessories, two of the accessory structures have bedrooms, that is a separate category under the use regulation table that requires a special permit.
Okay. We've had this discussion numerous times, because the bylaw, in our opinion, isn't really clear on this.
Okay.
It's kind of confusing, and the different requirements of different sections, in this case with the accessory structure with bedrooms, without bedrooms, or whatever, conflicts with some of the other provisions like this. We've discussed this numerous times. Yeah, what I want to avoid is not falling into A7B, where you need a variance, that's where we get hung up with this, is it still a special permit or not? And I think in this case, because I think you fall under as of right, I don't see that it would be an issue to give a special permit, but I'm not voting, I'll let the other members decide. Ms. Muller, questions?
Yes, Mr. Singer, could you address the question of kitchens, specifically in the first floor of the guest house?
Yes, Ms. Muller, there will, in the first, in the guest house of the building that is closest to Bayview Road, there is a, there will be a small eating facility, you know, kitchen area in that. There is not a kitchen in the garage building that has just the bedroom on the upstairs floor.
Okay, which is, and the presence of the kitchen as well as bedrooms is why you've categorized this building as a residential accessory building?
Yeah, well, I believe both of them are residential accessory buildings, but one of them is a, is a full guest house, where the other is just a regular garage with a bedroom.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Attorney Singer, what was the use of the three facilities prior to you coming to the board?
The structure on the north side, which is a garage, it is a, it's a, most of, the first floor's a garage, is actually garage doors on each end of the building. There is an open second floor on the second, the, the second floor in the, is just wide open. One of the structures looks like a shed, kind of a storage area. The other is, actually, I'm going to ask Sean, can you, if you can hear, can you address that question? I don't believe any of them had, where the accessory buildings had bedrooms in them themselves as of now.
Okay, okay. Who, so therefore, no one was habitating in any of these three structures?
And I'll ask Mr. Riley and Sean, do you agree with that? I believe the answer is yes.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Was there, was anyone living in any of these three structures prior to your application? Not prior to, but as of today, was anyone living in any of these three facilities?
Yeah, I believe the answer is no, outside of the, and the main house doesn't look like it's been lived in recently either, but no, not in the accessory structures to my knowledge.
Going forward, then, what is your intent for the use of the structure? So you intend to rent them? Do you intend to have them for family and friends, or what, what use, if you know?
This is up, it's, I do not, yes, this will be part of a family compound, so it is going to be used for, they will not be separately rented. There is, the, the family, the owners of the property will be living in the main house, the guest house will be for guests, and the bedroom over the garage is for, basically anyone who kind of wants to get out of the main house but still be on the property, but it'll all be a family compound.
Okay, okay. I have no further questions, but I just, as an added note to it, I think the fact that you're applying for a special permit is probably going to let some title examiners rest easy when they do a search on this in the future.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donahue. Al?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong.
Attorney Singer, how many total bedrooms will there be then? Nine, is it, that's what I count?
There will be three, you know, two in one of the accessory structures, one in the other one, as far as the main house.
There's six in the main house.
Was that Sean, so, yes, there will be a total of nine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Murphy.
No, both my questions have been answered, although I can't find, you mentioned there was a kitchen area in that guest room, the guest building. I can't see that in the plan, but I, it doesn't really matter. The fact is that people will be living there.
Mr. Capoli.
I know my questions have been answered, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Riley, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, please, go, go ahead, I've had a shot already, I'll wait.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, most of my questions have been answered, but I'm confused at the nine bedrooms, looking at the site plan, this is proposed two-bedroom guest house, proposed one-bedroom carriage house, then the pool house. So, what, where are the nine bedrooms?
This is Sean Riley, I could answer that question. If you're looking at the pool, to the right of the pool, you can see the text that says "proposed six-bedroom main dwelling." So there's six in there, one in the carriage house, the garage, and then two in the, and there, there's none in the, in the pool house.
Okay. I'm sorry, I had one additional question. Is there any requirements to raise the buildings for flood? Is it in flood zone or anything?
It is not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Riley, could you give us some, and Mr. Singer in particular, could you give us some clarification on accessory building residential versus a single-family and accessory apartment? Is that, is that guest house? Is that an accessory apartment, or is it an accessory residential building as you've characterized it? Definition of that seems to be, of an accessory building residential, seems to indicate not used for seasonal or year-round living, which this certainly would be.
Well, this is another thing we've discussed ad nauseam, that is one of the other conflicts, because in 325-2, the definition, and you're absolutely right, accessory building residential says it cannot be used for seasonal or year-round living. But if we go to 325-14Q, that talks about, let me just get it here, residential accessory building that contains bedrooms is subject to special permit review pursuant to Section 325-51. So again, this is, we talked about it, because they obviously conflict on their face.
Right.
And we, I think the more recent amendment is the, the 325-14Q, and I think we've said that that's what we should look at, that if it's a, a special permit, I'm sorry, that if it's a residential accessory building with bedrooms, it would be subject to the special permit. Let me just look at that second part of your question, which was the accessory apartments, dwelling with accessory apartments. Okay, this one, again, it's, none of these provisions really tie together very well.
Right.
But with the dwelling, single-family with accessory apartments, it's a single-family dwelling with the principal, which is the principal unit, and then a separate accessory apartment, which can be attached or detached, but here the apartment has to contain a kitchen and a bedroom. And then all of the different requirements under 325-51H that must be met if it's going to be a single-family dwelling with accessory apartment.
I am, I am hung up on, I'm hung up on the characterization or the definition of an accessory building residential as not used for seasonal or year-round living. The specification, any specification or language about a kitchen had been dropped from that. I'm just confused here. This would seem to me to be an accessory apartment.
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Because it is confused, the language is confused, the provisions conflict on their face, there's no explanation to it, except that when they decided to put in 325-14Q, they neglected to go back and change the definition of accessory building residential. And when it's come up before, we have taken the position that we have to give some kind of meaning to 325-14Q, which says an accessory, residential accessory building containing bedrooms is subject to a special permit, and we've elected to go with that and ignore the statement in the definition of accessory building residential, which says it can't be used for seasonal or year-round living, because you can't, you can't put them together, they just totally conflict.
Right. Okay, if that's our, that's the tack we're taking, I'm, I'm fine with it.
No, I'm, I'm in full agreement, it makes no sense, and the accessory apartment language doesn't really tie in well either. Although, probably, these buildings, since they're going to be conforming, probably would meet the requirement for accessory apartments. But I, I have to say, I haven't gone through them word by, how many square feet do we have in a lot? We have more than 40,000, I think.
56, I think, or...
Yeah, unfortunately, the plan...
66,000 square feet.
You can't read the numbers.
Mr. Chairman, this is Andrew Singer, just two comments, there is 66,000 square feet of land area. If you look at, and I agree with what you said, I've had cases with you before, and this language of conflicting language has come up. If you look at Table 1, which is the zoning use table, 1A is accessory residential buildings without bedrooms, 1B is residential accessory buildings with bedrooms. The accessory residential buildings with bedrooms are an S special permit use, as are, as Ms. Muller pointed out, single-family dwellings with accessory apartments. So, the analysis is the same, but it's the, you know, it's the same, it's the same relief. It has, as you said, been looked at, you know, it's conflicting language.
Right. Yes, and the uses, that's another example of them not jiving with the text of the provisions. We've had a number of instances of that, too. Anyway, is there anyone in the public out there that would like to comment on this application, either for it or against it? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
David, before the meeting is closed, public is closed, just one person, we got in a one-bedroom over the, over the garage, whatever, which does not have a kitchen. I realize it's a family compound right now, but going forward in the future, what would happen if they tried to rent out that single-bedroom unit that did not, that does not have a kitchen?
Well, I guess they could rent it as a bedroom, as a B, what do they call it, Airbnb, I guess.
There's no bathroom and there's no kitchen.
Yeah, to the bedroom.
Well, Derek, just, just, you know, there is a, there is a bathroom in that bill, there is a bathroom, just to clarify, on the second floor there.
It was okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm still looking for a motion to close the public hearing from someone. Okay, I don't know who the...
Your hand.
All right, well, I heard Ms. Muller, so she, she have a second, please?
Second, Jim Hilliard.
Donahue, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, all right, public hearing is closed. Further discussion by the board on the case.
I have Jim Hilliard.
I'm not gonna vote on it, I think it's a little confusing, but I, I do think they meet the criteria for a special permit. The only thing I wasn't crazy about was the, the pool controls, why that cannot be put inside the lot lines with such a big lot. But again, I'm not voting on it, but I, I did not like that sitting so close to the lot line there. You could argue that it's a new non-conformity rule. But. Anyway, it's. Up to the, the people voting to decide. Okay, I will entertain a motion on the case itself, I guess here are no further discussions.
I move that the board approve the special permit, special permits, to remove the three pre-existing non-conforming detached accessory structures, replace them with three conforming accessory structures. One accessory structure with two bedrooms and one garage, one bedroom and one pool house. Also move that, as a condition, that all construction vehicles and any storage of construction material be located on the premises during the period the construction is taking place. The property located at 17 Bayview Road, map seven, parcel J62, the RL zoning district.
Okay, that was a motion by Mr. Hilliard. Could we have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Armstrong, seconds. Discussion by the board. I think it meets the, the, I'm not gonna say the requirements of the Gale case, because these aren't single-family or two-family residential structures, but I do think it meets the requirement of the bylaw for a special permit. Anyone else have anything to say? No? Okay, all in favor of the special permit being granted? Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, special permit is granted, and Shayla, you're authorized to approve and stamp the documents?
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you later.
I will see you this evening.
Just making a note. Okay, so. We need to approve the minutes from.
February 26.
February 26. Did anyone have any comments on them? No comments? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved, Mike Capoli.
Okay, second to Mr. Capoli.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Muller?
In favor?
Hey, Mr. Hilliard?
I was not present at that meeting, Mr. Chairman, I can't vote.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Donahue?
Yes, accept.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
I wasn't at the meeting either.
Okay, sorry, I don't have them in front of me. Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Yes, and I'll vote in favor, yes, okay, meetings approved, minutes approved, Mr. Sullivan wasn't on the board then. Okay, quickly, discussion of essential services, you saw the opinion of counsel from Amy Quizel, dated March 23, 2020. In all the history, I had gone before the planning board and told them I thought it was a bad idea to get rid of essential services. And Amy Quizel came back and actually looked at it differently than I was looking at it, and probably all of us. When those cases came before us, the sewer case in the national grid, remember, the applicants were private landowners, and they were asking for special permits for the storage of materials. And when we looked at municipal use, the definition talks about, now, let me just get it, I can't do it from memory. It says a use, whether in a structure and/or on a parcel of land, owned and/or operated by the town of Harwich. And I was looking at the use as the storage of materials, because that's what they were asking for the special permit for. But our town attorney, Amy Quizel, says the use really was, in one case, the sewer, in the other case, the gas. And she thought they would qualify as municipal uses. I, I don't really agree, but you know what? We've got an opinion of counsel, so as far as I'm concerned, that's what we should rely on going forward if this comes up again. I don't, I, I mean, anybody wanna weigh in and comment? Part of the problem is, the planning board already got the deletion of essential use onto the town meeting, and they told me they can't, I'll take it off. They can recommend against it, or that it not go forward, or some such thing, but now that they've got the opinion of council, that's not gonna happen. So, I'm not interested in pursuing it any further at this point, we'll just rely on the opinion of council, whether we agree with it or not.
I agree with that, Dave.
Yeah, it'll be short-term uses, or most likely in connection with the sewer project, because that continues for another, what, 30 years, but more immediately, phase two next year, coming down my street right in front of the house. They're almost enough further up the street, but they'll finish it up. So, that was all I had for, to this, this meeting, and we'll reconvene. And actually, I have to say, it worked out better than I had feared. I was getting to my stomach just thinking about this, because the test meeting was terrible. Once we got everybody in, the problem is getting everybody in. And once we got everybody in, it seemed to go fairly well. A couple of people came in, and I forget who, what the fellow's name was, but they caused real sound issues there before we started the meeting. I don't understand what that issue was. I think they have on both their phone and the computer audio. That's what happened to you last time, Jim, that's why I think that.
Yeah, all right.
Dave, I, I think if there's any way we can figure out how to do the, the muting from your point, it might be a good idea, because today's three cases were uncontested. If the public can call in tonight, and 100 or 200 people call in, and anyone can yell out anytime they want, it's gonna be difficult.
So again, Dave, what, what Mary talked about is going up to that place that now says 11, it's got the two people in there, there's 11, and you can click on that, and it shows everybody's microphone. Mr. Barden is the top one, and his microphone is muted, then Mr. Sullivan, caller one, caller two, et cetera, et cetera. Have you tried clicking on those, and nothing will happen?
Nothing happens. Now, I tried to, like, I'm looking here now, Alex Barden is still on, and I clicked connect it to audio, but he's still on mute.
Right, he's done that probably for his, his, we could all, we could all mute ourselves.
Right. But I should be able, as the coordinator, or whatever the term they use is, to mute and unmute everyone, but I can't.
Well, let's go to the, the circle wheel, the wheel that has the settings. And let's see what we can do with that.
All right, I unmuted Chris, but I can't, I can't get him back again. Oh, there he is.
I think I had to do it. When, when you muted me, it popped up, would you like to be unmuted? And I had to actually accept it.
Kathy, you're muted.
And now I'm unmuted.
Okay, but you did that yourself.
Yes, I do that ourselves.
Kathy, I cannot.
How did you mute me?
Okay, I did unmute you. I did.
How did you mute me at first?
Okay, it is working now. I don't know why, look at Barden, and his won't work, but maybe he's not on anymore, even though he appears up here. And then we have a caller .01, I guess that's you, Jim.
Yep.
I don't, yeah.
That's me.
I don't know, you're not on video.
No, I, because I can't, I've got a, I've got camera icons, and so on and so forth, and it's the best I can do. Although, on my computer, my picture is on my computer looking back at me, but no one else.
This evening, you can wear pajamas.
Hey, Jim, is there anything, is there anything on your camera that gives you, you have to actually share your camera image to be, to be shown?
Well, I, yeah, I agree, I have, I have done the, the share, sharing the screen, says share your screen, and I push that button, and.
Share your screen doesn't do it?
Doesn't do it. The share your screen, and I push it, something comes up, but all it is, is a replication of what I'm looking at.
You, you don't, do you have the camera icon down at the bottom?
Yeah, I do. I have a camera icon.
It's a, it's a round blue circle with a camera in it?
Um, yes, I have that.
And clicking on that doesn't bring you up?
Uh, it just says two things, one, start Zoom, which is another platform, and unpin front taskbar. I mean, I'll push any button that comes up.
I would say not to do that right now. Jim, up to the top right of this go-to-meeting face is, it looks like a flower, but, or, or a cogwheel.
Yes.
Press that?
I see it. All right.
And when you go down, what does it say for webcam?
Hey, I'm trying to get, um.
Did, did you click on that?
Okay, all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the taskbar. It, all it says is, if I can get rid of this other thing, it says settings.
Yes. When you open up settings.
Camera, audio, okay.
There's, it says webcam, and there's a drop-down box for your webcam. Does it say anything on there for you? Does it say integrated webcam, or?
It says USB video device.
You see, the drop-down, see what else is available?
Yeah, that audio, camera in general. I've got, you're broadcasting, says, and then I have a camera, USB video device.
Under webcam, there's a, there is an arrow up, and, or an arrow down. Can you hit the arrow down and see if you have any other options?
Under webcam?
Yes, your picture, it says settings is the very top, then there should be a picture of you, and then right under that, that says webcam.
It doesn't, no, under that, it says camera, USB video device. Now, let me just click on this and see, then it says same thing.
So, so you have no arrows in that box, arrows, up or down?
No.
Yeah, it might, might be that your computer doesn't have a webcam.
Um.
It was on the other day.
Well, I've actually, but, but I've been on, I have been in meetings with this, my laptop, where I've been on the screen, and I've been seeing everybody, and they've seen me.
That happened last Thursday.
Right, yes.
Do you have a hammer?
Mystery, yes. I do.
When you logged on, did you, did you just use the link in the, in the email, or?
Yes.
Did you have to put in a code?
I put in a code after I logged on.
Um, I logged on just by hitting the, the link, and I went right to the go-to-meeting, I didn't use a code. So, just tossing that out.
Okay. Now, can, can you, hold on a minute, I'm gonna take my phone ears off for a second. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, as well.
Okay, I, I'm speaking to you through my phone, and I know that you can't have both. I don't think I can have my phone speaking to you, and me being able to speak to you through the computer at the same time.
Yeah, I suggest you try logging out and log back in, just reuse the link and, and test the power.
Jim.
Wait a minute, I'm gonna make a motion, we close the public meeting, because Channel 18 wants to know if we're still in it. So I'm gonna move that we close the public meeting, because we're just discussing the mechanics of the system, not cases now.
I second the motion.
Ms. Muller, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public meeting is closed. Okay, Chris, keep going.